Okay, if we could all have everyone take their seats. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, June 10, 2019. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
(Inaudible)
Alderman Nellie.
Present.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Present.
Alderwoman Cotto.
Present.
Alderman DiGio Van Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorsso.
Here.
Alderman Giacome.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujam.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Purnaruski.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. And just before we get to public speaking, two matters, well, one matter of housekeeping and then something. One is that just with Alderman Napoli leaving to go to the state legislature and Alderman Lopez moving up to the President Pro Temp, we had a vacancy in the chairmanship of the Intergovernmental Committee. So as of tonight, Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy is going to move over to Intergovernmental and become the Chair of that committee. Alderman Dorsso will become the Vice Chair. On Finance, Alderman DiGio Van Carlo will stay as the Chair and Alderwoman Cotto, who's moving over to Finance, will become the Vice Chair of that committee. So as of tonight, everything else then stays the same. And then if, without objection, we're going to just briefly suspend the regular order of business because as has become our custom, we have a plaque for Representative now Napoli just to recognize his years of service. So we're just going to stand down for a minute. We'll do that presentation and then we'll go from there. Thanks. Okay. As I've said, it's become something that we've been doing and I want to call, come on up, Ron. So we have a plaque that just recognizes Ron's 10 years of service on the Board of Aldermen from December of 2009 through May of 2019. And it's in sincere appreciation for your commitment, dedication and service to the city of Waterbury as a member of the Board of Aldermen. And it's stated May 20th, 2019, because that's when we had it made. We just haven't had a chance to have you here. So, but I just want to say, you know, I'm very proud of you. It's a bittersweet moment for me though, because I think it's a great opportunity for you to move up. But personally, for me, I would say that I'm friends with everyone on this board. I respect all of them. But our relationship over the years has been more like a little brother to me. So I feel sort of like a brother does when you're moving on. I'm proud of you going, but I'm really going to miss you and I wish you the best of luck. So congratulations.
Ron, proud of you. We campaigned together 10 years, sat next to each other at the governmental. And you taught me a lot of stuff and going to miss you, but we're still close friends, which is great. You're doing good things in Hartford already and I'm proud of you, buddy.
Alderman Lopez?
I will definitely say something, so yes. You know, you're such an amazing guy and it's exactly what Paul just alluded to. You know, we became brothers and we worked so hard campaigning, walking up and down. Your energy is second to none. You're just so genuine. And I am just so proud that I'm able to sit here and I hope, Ronnie, I hope that I can do just as good as you did of a job. I don't know if I can go 10 years, but just maybe these couple more years. Thank you.
So thank you very much for having this event tonight. Thanks, Paul and Ernie and Victor for the nice words. I probably owe my mother a big check for saying those nice things, so thank you. It's been an honor to serve in this chamber the past 10 years. I want to thank my colleagues who have been wonderful people to serve with. I also want to thank the city clerk, Mike Dalton, and his staff who do a wonderful job and Sheriff Conway who helped make these meetings run efficiently and on time. I also want to thank my colleagues on the minority side. We've done some good work together. It's been a pleasure to work with you as well. And I also want to thank my mom and dad who are here tonight, who have given me the courage to put my name on a ballot and fight for what I believe in. And my fiancee Lisa, who has stuck by me from day one. So I thank all of you. Look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
And with that, we'll return to the regular order of business. So the next item would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. There is a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 327 Bucks Hill Road, Vincent Scott Amiglia.
I'm Vincent Scott Amiglia. Live at 327 Bucks Hill Road. Came to complain about the North Main, the North Main Street up by Kingdom Hall, the sidewalk was collapsing into the street. The street's starting to weaken. Three-way stop at Bucks Hill Road and St. Michael's Drive to slow down the traffic. It's like a highway through there. You're talking about, you want to give people a $250 fine for leaving the garbage can out. Read something about it in the paper. Why don't you enforce all the stupid ordinances you made about parking on the sidewalk, no front plate, nothing hanging off the rearview mirror, tinted windows? We can go yada, 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 on and on, but that'll waste my time. The wall at 189 Bucks Hill Road is collapsing. Before somebody gets hurt, I don't know why you're not going to fix it. The Narcan versus Happy Pen in a police car or emergency vehicle. I think the Happy Pens more important than the Narcan. The 2.5 million you okayed to borrow from the pension fund, it's supposed to be returned. You said you borrowed it, it's supposed to be returned. Aldermen okayed it. I don't know if the pensioners can get it back with interest. Plus, past mayors borrowed money from the pension fund and never paid it back either. I don't know if the state's going to be watching this, but if you borrow it, it means it tends to return. If you don't return it, it constitutes theft. And if you make all these other ordinances, like I said, why don't you make an ordinance about the people who have their cars stolen while the keys are in it or it's running? Make the owner of the car responsible for the damages they did with the car. Have a nice day.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. I just want to go before I, you know, come down here to talk what I want to talk about, say something that, as you probably know, Joe Savoy passed away this week and he was Police Officer for the city of Waterbury. He was also a United States Navy veteran during the Vietnam War. And he was also President Town Plot Association. And also, he was past president of Waterbury Neighborhood Council. So I know a lot of people in this room know him, so I was hoping we could think about him and his family and keep him in our prayers. I just want to say I'm very happy and elated that Ron is here tonight. I know Ron, I know his father. I met his mother briefly and I know his lovely future wife, Lisa. But, you know, I have to say this, that Ron is like a brother to me too. Even though he's a Democrat, I'm a Republican, but it doesn't matter, you know? I mean, the thing is, we've worked together, we're friends, we've been friends for a long time, like you, Paul. And I know you guys came to the Waterville Community Club quite a bit, Ron. I know every time we called you about issues in Waterville, excuse me, you're always there. And I appreciate that. I think that's quite a task for what you've done. You showed up many, many times to our Waterville Community Club meetings for the Christmas parties and everything else for the kids. And so I do appreciate everything you've done. I have to say, when my father would always say, who was also World War II veteran, "You're a gentleman and a scholar." And I appreciate everything you did for us. Now, I'm bringing this up because I wrote this up and that is a proposal, but before I do, I just want to say, a lot of people have been asking me, say, Martin, how come you didn't come to the last budgetary meeting? I came to the first one, the second one, I couldn't make it. Obviously, I was out of town and I couldn't make it. But before I forget, because I don't have a lot of time, speaking of Waterville Community Club, it's going to be this Wednesday, it's going to be at 6:30 at the Old Waterville Firehouse. All right. I had something I wrote down over here and I would like to see if we could get more participation in the city government. And I'd like to see if we could create this. And it's called the Waterbury Citizens Advisory Committee. Overview, the Waterbury Citizens Advisory Committee oversees and makes recommendations to the mayor, Board of Aldermen, Board of Education, Department Heads and Union Leaders pertaining to actual financial expenditures. The Citizens Advisory Committee shall consist of no more than eight members panel with full voting rights, especially when it comes to the city of Waterville's annual budget expenditures and fiscal year, only to recommend advice and not to exceed any authority over any elected official whom represent the sole purpose of obligations and responsibilities to the constituents and citizens of City of Waterbury. The WCAC shall have representatives from the mayor's office, representatives from the Board of Aldermen, representatives from the Board of Ed, union reps, department heads with CPA background, and finally, committee leaders, community leaders. The WCAC shall meet every quarterly on the third Thursday from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. unless notified pertaining to any changes with rescheduling by the city clerk's office. Extra time duly noted and tallied. They meet in mayor's conference room. All members shall be recorded by secretary in good standing. All members shall be close to the public at large and especially on providing financial matters. It should be not, in other words, I like to have the meetings open, but if it comes down to things that pertain to, that's very, you know, not secretive, but like financial matters, that really wouldn't be able to go out to the public, I would like to see that closed to the public for now.
One minute, Mr. Spring.
Okay. That's why I said I got to hurry up over here. All WCAC members shall be appointed by the Board of Aldermen to a three-year term. That would be an off-year, so it doesn't interfere with the budget. Newly appointed WCAC members must live and reside in Waterbury showing proof. And lastly, all taxes must be paid in full, no exceptions. Thank you.
Next speaker from 5 Cindy Drive, George Stamboleglu.
Good afternoon. George Stamboleglu, 5 Cindy Drive. I know Ronnie's leaving, but he's a great guy and we have somebody with integrity and, you know, an honest guy up in Hartford. Today, I'm here to discuss a very important issue that's paramount to Waterbury, growing and to the working and middle-class people in our community. I want to start off with a quote. The quote is, "The general public doesn't trust the legislator or state government to do what we say we're going to do." That quotes Representative Reyes here from Waterbury. He went on to say, "To restore credibility is what is required." So now I'm going to play Governor Lamont.
That allows me to fix a lot of roads and bridges. So you don't foresee a toll on ordinary drivers? I don't foresee that at all. Is that a pledge you want to make today, that that will not happen? That's a pledge that not going to happen. I'm going to do tractor-trailer trucks, no tolls.
So I played that clip because I couldn't do it justice. That was a couple days before the election. So a few months ago, I came here and talked about apathy and how many public servants are apathetic to the needs of the middle class and the working class in Connecticut. I sadly feel that, I sadly feel this is true after seeing all the taxes and fees coming from Hartford. I also worry that the politicians have forgotten our small businesses and are slamming them with new regulations and fees. Many small businesses are already pivoting and going into survival mode. Many of my clients and friends are small business owners and I've had candid conversations with them. And these are some of the things they've told me they're going to do with some of these new regulations. Cut hours in staff. One local business here in town is already putting up an ordering kiosk. And many industries, including supermarkets, retail, food service and banking, will follow suit and reduce employees and ramp up the use of kiosks and automated machines. McDonald's already has soda pouring machines and kiosks in almost all its locations. It's very obvious the blue wave is becoming a tsunami of regulations, taxes and anti-business policies. The CBIA has slammed Hartford for not listening to business and at least having a conversation before these new taxes and regulations. They also don't trust our politicians on the tolls and the lockbox. Warren Buffett was recently quoted saying, "Telling businesses not to move to states with pension issues because it will be an ever-increasing bill, you'll be paying forever and ever." JP Morgan Chase issued a report on pensions and said Connecticut is one of the worst and questioned Hartford's over-aggressive investment return calculations and said it's probably worse than they're telling us. JP Morgan Chase also suggested and discussed Puerto Rico maybe filing bankruptcy in the future and said states like Connecticut may have to look after that in about 10 or 15 years. I want to first thank the brave Alderman who asked a few months ago for an anti-toll resolution. And I feel now it's more important than ever that our local representatives step up and show some bravery and not be apathetic to the middle and working class. The Speaker of the House said that he's proud of the governor's honesty and bravery on tolls. He kind of lied the entire election, up until the day before, and the Speaker wanted tolls for years. It would have been brave and honest if the Democrats brought a vote before the election and then were taking the task during the election. Nobody knew they were going to get 50 to 100 tolls. Many people don't even know we're going to get 50 tolls today. The public is apathetic. They don't trust government, they're not listening, they don't know what's going on. Ned Lamont said on tolls, it was going to be on trucks only. It was a blatant lie. The Speaker and the Dems wanted this for years. And let's be honest, it's not about the roads, it's about pensions and other bills. We collect enough money for the roads. And even Representative Osten said, this is her quote, "Diverting is not stealing." Well, they've been diverting funds from the transportation budget for years, they're diverting money this year from the transportation budget. We collect enough money between our gas taxes, different fees and government money that we get, the 500 million from the Fed, to cover our roads. The budget has diversions in it. Diverting or stealing, whatever is the politically correct term, is still not the right thing to do. We have high unemployment and are losing jobs in Connecticut. Plastic company may be moving out of Waterbury, UTC is moving jobs to Massachusetts, and we will continue to see more people and companies leave Connecticut. The tolls will only accelerate this and make it more expensive to live, work and do business here. Our mall is unlike support.
One minute, sir.
Our mall is unlike support and another, one anchor is closed, another is downsizing, and soon tolls will make this mall less attractive than it is and may be a dead mall. The health of our state is an important city issue and should be taken up. Show some bravery, show that you're not apathetic to the needs of the middle class. We ask you for your help because we're starting to lose faith in our public service. All of you here on this board are really good people. We're lucky to have you. Democrats and Republicans, you both care about Waterbury. Discuss this, debate this and consider passing a no-toll resolution to support the middle class. I know leadership said it's not a city issue. I think tolls affect our pockets and our business a lot more than talking about plastic backs. So let's have a conversation, let's have a debate. Everybody go on record, vote it up or down. We know it's about politics. Everybody should be on record which way they are in this bill. Thank you.
Next speaker from 26 Maywood Street, Carla Despizito.
Good evening. Carla Despizito, 26 Maywood. Would Alderman Weaver be here by chance? Yes? Oh, good. Okay. I didn't see, I didn't hear you at roll call. I would ask that legislatively you enact at roll call that when verbally acknowledging your presence, you raise your hand. So I can see what name goes with what face. I also ask that you vote, I voted back in the day, I voted against creating districts for Aldermans. I think it's a bad idea. I'd like to see you rescind it. I would ask that you create a design where an Alderman, there is an Alderman office in this building with a live Alderman manning that office each day. The building is open for business so that when a person comes in, they can come and talk to a live person. I don't want to make a phone call. I didn't even know who my Alderman was. I had to call the clerk. I was told it was Mrs. Weaver. I called her on the phone. I want to be able to walk down here, go into an office, I don't care who's there, because you all are supposed to be for, the whole town. When you start making districts, it starts getting, competing against each other, and I'm anti-competing against everybody. So I would like that you would create the design of an Alderman office here and you guys man it two days a month, be down here so that constituents can come in and talk. Three, I ask that you legislatively enact a law called Superlative Curb Appeal for all rental units, particularly rental units that are single-family and duplexes that are found in single-family neighborhoods. I happen to have a next-door neighbor that the grass is a foot high. I've mowed my lawn six times already, they've done it once, and only because I called Mrs. Weaver about it, who then, because I couldn't get a hold of blight. That's my fourth issue. I would like to see the Blight Committee taken out of the police department. I would like it set into the Alderman's domain. Somebody man it that we can talk to you and you guys walk around the town and take a look at how shoddy things are. I would see, I would like to see that north, south, east Main Street, at the least, should have court-ordered persons cleaning the gutter, weeding the gutter. Place is already horribly looking, weeds all over the place, makes Waterbury look like a dump. Last thing I would request, and I've requested it since, since my daughter moved here many years ago, I would come up and visit, but I've been up here maybe since 2015, 16, and I've written letters to the mayor, gotten zero response, multiple letters. But I wish to see more sidewalks. There's a man, the first speaker, he left. He's talking about up at Kingdom Hall on North Main Street, sidewalks or drains caving in. There are, I'm up off North Main Street. I'm up behind Target. I passed that Kingdom Hall place to go up to St. Michael's.
One minute, ma'am.
Okay. I want to see some white cement sidewalks, not black asphalt that's three inches, one inch higher than the black asphalt road, that you cannot delineate the road from the sidewalk. I want to see white cement sidewalks with white curbs that are good seven inches tall to delineate the difference. I want it on both the right side and the left side of all roads. North Main Street is horrible. I like walking down to Immaculate Conception during the summer for mass. There's no sidewalks! And there's cars zooming by that don't do the 30 mile an hour. So I expect you people to earn your pay. I want to see all these things enacted. I want to see all these things implemented. I want to see some improvement. I want the weeds picked out of the edge of the curbing.
That's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 229 Westwood Avenue, Sandra Santoro.
Hi. I'm here on behalf of...
Would you just state your name and address again for the record?
Sandra Santoro, 229 Westwood Avenue in Waterbury.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of Bunker Hill. We have a serious problem with water. The city, I'm sure, has been aware of that for a very long time. The problem now is really coming to light because we have storm drains that go nowhere. We don't have storm drains that are on the maps. Years ago, when these homes were built, they diverted waterways and then backfilled all that property with garbage, just turned it into a dump. Then decided, okay, now we can build on it. No one will know the difference. Well, now it's all coming back. And it's coming back on the people that live there. My house, I put everything I had into that home. It is now stress cracks. I did all-new windows. I bought that home from a gentleman called Tom O'Leary, who never said anything about a water problem when I bought it. When I had an inspector show up for the house, I asked him if anything was wrong. He went through, "Oh, no, everything's fine, everything's fine." No one divulged anything to me. Now I'm paying the price. Windows don't fit properly any longer and I had all-new windows installed, all-new doors, interior, exterior, walls, floors. I took care of that property like you wouldn't believe and practically rebuilt this house. Now I'm having cracks showing up across the ceiling. I'm having cracks in the walls in my home. I'm taking in water. I have black mold. It's coming up, water's coming up through the floor, and yet I'm getting nowhere. I have spoke with Mr. Simpson several times. In fact, I've yelled at Mr. Simpson several times, which I do apologize for. But it's very frustrating to me and the rest of the neighborhood. Everyone has sub pumps. I do not have a sub pump. I can't afford a sub pump. Now I'm on a fixed income, a disability, and I'm stuck with a home that I put everything into and can't even sell it at this point because I won't do to another person what Mr. Thomas O'Leary did to me. I need the city to step in. Everybody has sub pumps, but you're not supposed to put the sub pumps out, you can't let them drain out into the road. Well, the roads are all cracking because that water's running underneath those roads. Then we have yards that are nothing but swamps. And how can you, we're paying all this money for taxes for property that we can't even sit out in our yards and enjoy. The mosquitoes have already started. We have everything out there, oh, bees, we've got mud whops that are, because of the ditches in the mud, that you can't, at the side of the road. So why are we paying all this phenomenal amount of money in taxes when we can't even use our property? And I already fixed that house once before. Why should I be liable for fixing it again when the state of Connecticut, the city of Waterbury, needs to step in and help us with this neighborhood? Do something. We're drowning. Actually, my house is sinking. All right? Mr. Simpson has come up the house. I did show him everything. And now I'm getting more cracks in the walls. So what am I supposed to do with this property? And then I'm sitting here saying, well, why am I paying for foundations? Which, that's the other thing, my foundation in the back is starting to crumble. Why am I paying for foundations for these homes up north when that wasn't our fault and I can't even afford to pay for mine at this point?
One minute.
Okay. One minute what?
You have one minute left to finish speaking.
Oh, well, I think that's about it.
Okay.
But I need, I need somebody to step in. They need to help me out in particular because my house is sinking, but the rest of the homes are swamps. The yards are swamps.
No, no, you have to just, just, we're not going to have that. Just finish your thoughts.
That's what my thought is.
Okay.
Okay? And I just, I'm here for help. I'm getting nowhere. All I hear is, well, we're researching it, we're researching it. Well, I'm sure you are, but how come I got more research than you did? We've had engineers up there and still it goes nowhere. It's, I think everybody's hoping that me in particular will just keep quiet and go would just keep quiet and go away, and I just can't do that. That's my home.
Okay. Then that's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. The next item would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, which was a Department Heads Budget Meeting and a meeting, a regular meeting for Monday, May 20th, 2019. Is there a motion with respect to the minutes?
Motion approved the Department Heads Budget Meeting on Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, and the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen on Monday, May 20th, 2019. So move.
Second.
Motion having been made, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any, or any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. A yes vote would be to approve the minutes, a no vote to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Before we go into committees this evening, just two things. Item, new business item number three is withdrawn. That's the contract that we acted on at this special meeting last week. And with respect to old business item number four, I am going to pass around, while the committees are meeting, there's a revision that the Corporation Council's office has done, and they're proposing that we take up. So that's going to be available to you, and they'll get it to the clerk's office to post those revisions. And that will be the, the draft that we'll consider after the public hearing two weeks from tonight. And with that, we'll adjourn into committees. We'll start with finance.
Mr. President, item five, were we taking off?
What's that? What's that?
Old Business Five.
Mr. President, you said item, old, old business item number four. It should be number three.
Oh, old business number five should just go. That's the mayor's proposed budget. So that'll just get removed because we've already voted on that. I'm sorry, Alderman Cotto? Did you say something?
Old Business Number Three is going to be sent to the Corporate Council for review.
Yeah, we'll take care of that. I'll, I'll deal with that through her, so. Okay? Anything further? All right, then we'll go into committees. Finance Committee will meet first, and then intergovernmental. Thank you.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number seven, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve refunds for the following canceled electrical permits as submitted by E. Gill Grave Line, Building Official, Department of Inspections, 57 East Liberty Street, $450. 57 East Liberty Street, $450. 111 Burnside Avenue, $75. 57 Park Lawn Drive, $700. 41 Platt Street, $300 for a total refund of $1,777.50.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item number eight, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a refund to renewal by Anderson for following canceled permit as submitted by Jeff Biolo, Assistant Building Official, Department of Inspections, 102 Traverse Street, $475. Total refund of $427.50.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion. Excuse me. Alderman Sherman.
Thank you. I see the ten, minus 10%. Is that a, a normal fee that we, okay. Is there anyone here that could actually answer that question? Okay. Disregard.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item nine, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve refunds to Trinity Solar for the following canceled electrical permits as submitted by Jeff Biolo, Assistant Building Official, Department of Inspections, 207 Purdy Road, $1,125. 19 Lone Oak Avenue, $425. 25 Douglas Avenue, $650. 35 Rockers Drive, $625. 172 Charlotte Street, $375. And 66 Partridge Drive, $625. Total refund, $3,442.50.
So move.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 13, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve following refund for overpayment as submitted by Michael J. Dalton, City Clerk, Joan Jean Baptiste, 18 Greenmount Terrace, in the amount of $400.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? I actually just have one question. Can somebody here in the chambers tell us, what, what is the refund for?
Overpayment?
Overpayment.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 14, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer within the city's capital improvement fund for year ending 6/30/19 in the amount of $20,800 as submitted by Sarah Argary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist, Office of the Mayor.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you, Sarah. That amount, is that something that will be offset from the original approval for that project, or?
The $20,800 is required to be locally funded for a construction administrator for the project. The grant was in the amount of $1.54 million from the state of Connecticut. Approximately $500,000 of that was used to demolish the old SNET building, and the remainder will be used for the construction of the fees to improvements at the train stations.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Standing, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $7,925.94 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
I'd like to call the, to order the intergovernmental committee meeting scheduled for Monday, June 10th, 2019. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the 2019 CT Neighborhood Assistance Act applications to WIT, Boys and Girls Club of Greater Waterbury, Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury, Literacy Volunteers of Greater Waterbury, New Opportunities, Inc., Safe Haven of Greater Waterbury, Inc., Sacred Heart High School, Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association, YMCA, as submitted by Nancy K. Allen, NAA Municipal Liaison, City of Waterbury.
Motion to approve, item number five is read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to recuse myself from voting on item number five. I am the Executive Director of the Hispanic Coalition.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have item number six. Your intergovernmental committee respects, respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve CDYR45, 2019-2020, Annual Action Plan, and authorize Mayor Neil M. O'Leary to submit the plan and execute any and all related documents as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of the Community Development, City of Waterbury.
Motion to approve, item six is read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the Hispanic Coalition being a grantee on, on this item, I would also like to recuse myself as the Executive Director.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 10. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve Amendment Number Two to the Trail Conservation Agreement with Connecticut Forest and Park Association as submitted by Ray Van Egis, Environmental Resource and Water Quality Manager, Bureau of Water.
Motion to approve, item number 10 is read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have a quick question. I read through the document here, and there's a list. Thank you, sir. Your name?
Ray Van Egis.
Excellent. So there's a list in here, which lists the unallowable activities. I did not read fishing in, in that entire list. I understand the project, the, the project is for hiking, for a hiking trail. Is there fishing allowed within the, those reservoirs?
There is not.
There's none? Okay. Okay. That, that's, that's it. I'm a fisherman, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 11. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the extension, time extension, Health and Pharmacy Claims Audit Vendor, TMDG LLC, as submitted by Karen Lang, Pensions and Benefits Manager.
Motion to approve, item number 11 is read.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Item number 12. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the 909 Bank Street Park Project Authorization Letter, estimated total remediation cost $45,000 through $130,000 as submitted by James Nardozzi, interim CEO of Waterbury Development Corporation.
Motion to approve, item number 12 is read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Bernelli?
Hi, Jim. Thanks for coming. A little confused on the first page where it says twice, "removal of slabs in asphalt." Is there a difference between item two and three?
There is. James Nardozzi, interim CEO of Waterbury Development Corporation. Uh, thank you for the question. We know from our environmental consultant that the underground storage tank has to be removed. As far as the removal of slabs and asphalt only, that'll be determined, um, once we get in the ground, what slabs could be underneath there. And as far as soils, again, once we pull out the underground tank, then we would know the extent of the soil contamination. So what we asked for was a best-case and a worst-case scenario. Thus, the price range, $45,000 to $130,000. Any funds that are not drawn down would remain in custody of the grantor agency, Nogatuck Valley Cog.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was actually going to ask the same question, but, but further than that, considering that number three is the removal of slabs in the asphalt and the first footing of soil, is there a savings? Would there be a savings if, if those three things get done together, or?
We, we want to clean the entire lot together. So whatever needs to be done will be done simultaneously. So if this board approves the project authorization letter, then we'll be preparing bid documents to go out to bid to completely clean the lot, whatever the extent of that is.
Okay. So I guess where I'm heading towards is, i- if that is the case, why would, why would there be two sep, two different ones? Why would there be slabs in asphalt for $300,000, and then a separate one for $115,000 if we're looking at?
Because we don't know the extent of what's underground until we pull the tank out. And the savings are all, there wouldn't all be savings to us. Nogatuck Valley Cog is paying for it, up to $130,000.
Okay. So I guess that the, the amount of money allocated is $130,000. It would be used as best as possible to, to get the most work done?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Matthews?
Mic is off. Quick question. You said when it goes out to bid?
Yes, sir.
The person that gets the bid is going to do the whole project?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And once the soil is removed, it's going to be tested? And if there's any contaminants, they're going to do a complete clean of the whole area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was just to make sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen not disapprove the appointment of Sean M. Mosley to the Board of Police Commissioners with the term of June 10th, 2019 to December 31st, 2022 as submitted by Mayor Neil O'Leary.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion not to disapprove the appointment of Sean Mosley to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 16. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Agreement for CDYR41, 2015-2016, with Brass City Harvest, Inc. as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
Motion to approve, item 16 is read.
Second.
I have a, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I would like to recuse myself. I sit on the Board of Directors for Brass City Harvest and therefore feel that I need to recuse myself.
Any other discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Agreement for CDYR-42, 2016-2017, with Brass City Harvest, Inc., as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
Motion to approve item number 17 is read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair? Yes, Madam Chair, I'll need to recuse myself from item 17 because I sit on the Board of Brass City Harvest.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Agreement for CDYR-44, 2018-2019, with Brass City Harvest, Inc., as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of the Community Development.
Motion to approve item number 18 is read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions?
Madam Chair, again, I need to recuse myself. I sit on the Board of Directors for Brass City Harvest.
Thank you. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 19. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Project Authorization Letter for Design Phase Services for the Nogatuck River Greenway Phase One with the Connecticut Department of Transportation and to authorize the mayor to execute said PAL on behalf of the City of Waterbury, as submitted by Salvatore D. Porzio, Project Manager, Bureau of Engineering, DPW.
Motion to approve item number 19 is read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Porzio, how are you?
Fine, sir. Thank you. How are you?
Good. I just have a quick question. So I read the document. I understand according to the paragraph that the purpose of the PAL is to account for increased costs incurred by the Connecticut Department of Transportation in connection with additional and unanticipated needed administrative services for the project. There's probably four pages in here. What were those unanticipated and needed administrative services, sir?
Salvatore Porzio, Project Manager, Department of Public Works. The original agreement which the PAL is supplementing was predated any design work. It also predated the archaeological issues that we had. That involved more administrative work by ConDOT. Also, this project received additional federal funding recently. Under the federal guidelines, basically, we hire ConDOT to administer the funds and oversee the project. There's different phases. This is for the design phase. With the additional funding comes additional oversight admin costs. So, say if it was a percentage, I'm not sure, 10%. There's 10%, there's so many more, much more funds, we have an additional 10% of admin and oversight by DOT for this project. So those are the additional and the unexpected primarily had to do with the archaeological discoveries.
Where are we in the design phase? What does this, what does this mean that we're taking on this, on this additional? It's not a lot of money, but the additional funding?
Yes. Our, the quote-unquote "demand deposit" that we are responsible for, for this increase is $15,000. That's our 20% match. The remainder, the balance of the $75 increase will be, will come from the federal funds. That's the 80% federal participation amount. The overall big picture is, the intent is to have this project out to bid and have construction commence late spring 2020. So that'd be next construction season.
Out to bid next spring.
Well, no, no. Out to bid and construction commencing for 2020 construction season.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any further discussion? I actually have a question. Is there an ETA when this will be done? When it will be completed?
The estimate is, I believe, 15 months from commencement of construction. It's a question of timing, construction season, planting. If it goes late, we have to wait until the following spring to do the landscaping because we can't do that in the, you know, too late in the year. And paving as well. But we anticipate 15 months at most, optimistically.
15 months at most?
Yes, for construction.
Okay.
That's being, I'm, I'm an optimist.
Okay. Good. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Good job. Good. Nice one.
Thank you. I tried.
I don't want to sign the last one. I know better.
We're going to dispense with the consent calendar this evening and go item by item. Each chair will please begin with items to go through. We actually are going to have to skip a couple because of the recusals. So, following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is on, receiving place on file. Item number two is receiving place on file. Item number three is withdrawn. Item number four is receiving place on file. Five and six, we actually are going to keep from the consent only because of the recusal. We'll come back to those. Seven is on consent to approve. Eight is on consent to approve. Nine is on consent to approve. 10, 11, and 12 are on consent to approve. 13 is on consent to approve. 14 is on consent to approve. 15 is on consent not to disapprove the appointment of Sean Mosley to the Board of Police Commissioners. 16, 17, and 18, we're going to just keep off because of the recusals. 19 is on consent to approve. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved. The consent calendar is read.
Second.
Motion having been made, seconded by Alderman Martinez-McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Made by Alderman Brunelli. Is there any discussion? Any changes, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved, is read. With respect to items five and six, we'll take those together. The chair would recognize Alderman Martinez-McCarthy as Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee, and you can do those both together.
Okay. Item number five and item number six. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the 2019 CT Neighborhood Assistance Act applications to WIT, Boys and Girls Club of Greater Waterbury, Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury, Literacy Volunteers of Greater Waterbury, New Opportunities, Inc., Safe Haven of Greater Waterbury, Inc., Sacred Heart High School, Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association, as submitted by Nancy K. Allen, NAA Municipal Liaison, City of Waterbury. And item number six. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the CDYR-45, 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan and authorize Mayor Neil O'Leary to submit the plan and execute any and all related documents, as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of the Community Development, City of Waterbury.
Motion to approve items five and six is read.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, chair would recognize Alderman Weaver.
For five and six, I have to recuse myself.
Okay. The record will reflect that. With that, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Alderman Lopez?
Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Lopez is going to have to recuse himself again. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Any other discussion or recusals? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. New business items five and six are approved. With respect to new business items 16, 17, and 18, the chair would recognize Alderman Martinez-McCarthy as Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Do you want me to read them all together?
Yeah, you can do it all as one. I think we can do it that way.
Okay.
Because it's the same people who have to do the recusal.
Item number 16. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Agreement for CDYR-41, 2015 and 2016, with Brass City Harvest, Inc., as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of the Community Development. Item number 17. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends the Board of Alderman approve the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Agreement for CDYR-42, 2016-2017, with Brass City Harvest, Inc., as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development. Item number 18. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Agreement for CDYR-44, 2018-2019, with Brass City Harvest, Inc., as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
Motion to approve items 16, 17, and 18 is read.
Motion having been made.
Mr. President?
Seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Alderman Salvio?
Yes. I'll need to recuse myself from items 16, 17, and 18 because I am on the Board of Directors for the Brass City Harvest, Inc.
Okay. Thank you. Any other recusals? Any other discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve 16, 17, and 18, and no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. 16, 17, and 18 are approved. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman Dijo Von Carlo.
Mr. President, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $7,925.94 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
So move.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Cato and seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. Last item, just, it's under the good of the order, is a proclamation from the mayor. With respect to Men's Health Month, I'll just go through it very quickly. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas educating the public and health care providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventative health can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in health screenings. And whereas fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthier children. And whereas the Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventative health practices. And whereas the Men's Health Month website has been established at www.menshealthmonth.org and features resources, proclamations, and information about awareness events and activities, including Wear Blue for Men's Health at www wearblueformenshealth.com. Whereas in Waterbury, Men's Health Month will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, and prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. And whereas the citizens of Waterbury are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now I therefore, Mayor Neil M. O'Leary, Mayor of the City of Waterbury, do hereby proclaim June as Men's Health Month in Waterbury and encourage all of our citizens to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts. Neil M. O'Leary, Mayor of the City of Waterbury. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion having been made, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, and we're adjourned. We'll see you all in two weeks on the 24th.